It's a beautiful dress.
Thank you. I can mention it. I don't say it.
I was gonna say, it looks very nice dress.
Thanks, okay. Let's move on.
Okay. I am gonna call the, uh... No, you can't help me. There we go. All I want is the hour. I am gonna, uh... Call the meeting to order at 7:03. And this is the Board of Selectmen meeting, June 5th, 2019. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just, before we start, I'd like to, uh, comment. At this moment, uh, it is probably about 7 o'clock in the morning on Normandy Beach on the 6th of June. Seventy-five years ago today, our guys were hitting that beach, many of them paying the highest price you can pay. And I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of them. Thank you. Thank you all. Especially the guys over there. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda. And we have to add one item to it. And that would be the Conservation Commission does have a resignation, the item 8D. And with that alteration, can I get a second?
Second.
And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have the minutes. The meeting of May 15th, 2019. I put them over and happy with them. I am gonna make a motion to approve the minutes as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
And, uh, any discussion on that or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't have any correspondence. And I'm gonna do my report at this point. And I don't see Laurie. I thought she was gonna make it, and I spoke with her earlier, to report on the analysts and their experience. But I do know there's something going on at the Senior Center right now. And that may be getting in the way of her being here. What she did have to report, that the mutual aid is below 10%. Things are working extremely well. And they're now looking to recruit and bring back members and get it better organized again. Beyond that, a couple of things. East Shore Drive, you may have heard some self-reports from people about that. A lot of complaints about the condition of the road right now. Last winter, when we had mud holes, buses getting hung up, some serious problems. They brought in fairly heavy trap rock. And talking to Beth, it was what they had to bring in to get the bike to have it stay in place. That's going to be removed later this summer, and the road will be completely reworked. But I've probably received five or six complaints already. You can't walk on it, you can't ride a bicycle on it. It's quite a difficult, damaging tires as well. And this is fairly heavy-duty trap rock that was put in place. I went over and took a ride down it, and quite a bit of it. But it is all gonna come out, and it's all gonna be reworked by the, uh... Later in the summer. Petticoat Lane, right now, is being paved. We anticipate that it'll be complete late this week or very early next week. And then there'll be some finishing up, putting up, uh, culverts and getting them into shape and doing the sides of the road stuff. But the basic road should be complete by the end of the week or very early next week. And there was a report back on the 26th. People might be aware of it. That there was a tremendous amount of activity on the part of emergency services. I happen to be up here at the moment, uh, doing some other things. And it seemed like every vehicle we had took off. There'd been some people tubing, group of kids tubing down from Comstock Bridge. When they got down to Powerhouse Road and started checking things out, one of them was missing. And no one knew what was going on. It was considered a pretty, pretty big deal. Everybody turned out for it. Eventually, it was discovered that the girl had, uh... Had enough. Hiked out to 16, I guess, and walked back to Comstock Bridge, sitting in the car there. Unfortunately, she didn't have a phone, couldn't let anybody know what had happened. So it got a little bit exciting for a while, but she was okay in the end. In the last two weeks, we've done quite a bit of hiring. As you may know, our EDC court administrator found that she had to leave and move to Oregon, which probably not the worst thing that could happen to you. And we had to locate someone new. We interviewed. And in the end, we hired Irene Haynes to do that job for us. And she feels that she can do both. I'm hopeful that she can. But she seems to be very much up to speed. She's a member of the Economic Development Commission right now and is very familiar. Susan has apparently briefed her before she left of what was going on. And hopefully, that'll be, that'll work out. Our Public Works, uh... If you look at the statistics, I've got them here somewhere. We need 7,800 hours of work this summer. We kinda sat down and worked it out, came up with the numbers on it. And given all the things we have to do, the best estimate was around 7,800. Our Public Works guys can only take vacations in the summer. We're not allowed to, they're not allowed to do it in the winter because of snow. So you find that you have a lot of people out for a good portion of the summer. And we bring in temporary people. We spoke with the people who got permission to hire a little bit earlier than we normally would. June 15th is usually the date. And we went ahead and put three people on. And they're temporary, they'll be here through September 15th with the permission to take teams, or if we may go a little bit beyond that. We estimate that we can probably get about 6,800 hours of work completed at this point. We won't get it all done regardless. But we're gonna be a whole lot closer to what we have to do during the summer. And keep in mind that our crew has a full agenda on a normal summer. This year, we've got trees, we've got all the damage from the last September's floods. We've got a lot more work than we ordinarily would expect. And then our aid staff at the fire department. One of the guys' shifts where he normally works changed. He's not gonna be quite as available. And on July 1st, we're going to 130 hours rather than the 95 hours we currently have per week. That'll give us a 6 to 6 coverage. And that's pretty much what we need now to get the job done and avoid the mutual aid. And we did budget for 130 hours. And we put on three guys who will fill in and make it all happen. And keep in mind that we're just gonna, we're budgeted for 130 hours. That's all we're gonna use. We did it with two guys, be one way. We can do it with three guys, they'll get a little less each. And there's no benefits with the, uh... These positions.
So we have two full-timers, and then you said we hired, so we hired three part-timers?
Uh, right now, we have one full-timer, three part-timers.
Oh, okay.
And what we will have when we're finished is one full-timer and six part-timers. Per diems. And it's simply a matter of filling the hours that we are looking to fill at this point. And we did budget for the 130 hours during the budgeting process. Moving on from there. Chatham Health. We have a new director, Russell Melmed. And he is in position, and his confirmation from the state, they reviewed the position, and he has the credentials. And we do have a letter back from them confirming him. So he will be our director. He's a pretty good guy, and he's very much a firebrand. He's doing a good job. May 25th, Jack Herman. We had a bench dedicated at Heritage Park to him as a memorial. It's a nice stone bench, right on the walk there. Worth a visit just to see it. And had a very nice turnout, a nice ceremony dedicating that, uh... That to his memory. Swing Bridge. Sidewalk is back in play again. This federal government came out with an additional build, uh... Program. $600 million of it, or $900 million, rather, available for projects all across America. We were in the running last year. We were considered, Stanford ended up with what Connecticut got. We are in the process right now of applying again. So we're hopeful that we're gonna get the monies we need for that swing bridge sidewalk. Talked to the state, they're still on board. They've actually pushed out the project a year. It's gonna be done in 2021 now, set at 2020. And part of the reason was the Aragoni Bridge is gonna be in process at the same time. They felt there was just too much to do it at that point. And so they pushed it out here, which frankly, works a little better for us. Okay. And lastly, there was a discussion or question last time about notifications from Valley Shore for the swing bridge when it has a problem. And I get notified, I'm made aware of the fact that something's going on. And Emergency Management Craig is also made aware. The dilemma you're confronted with is you really have no clue as to how long it's gonna last. And that's where it becomes difficult. If it's gonna be a five or 10-minute proposition or a half an hour, that's one thing. If it's gonna be several hours or a day, that's another. And it's incredibly difficult. I've got all the phone numbers in here, probably eight or 10 of them. And you can cycle through them and not get much of a response. We do the best we can. There's a couple of alternatives. If we can get the information and get some sense of what's going on, we will post it to Everbridge. So it'll be out on that. Anyone can sign up for, uh, bridge notifications from the state of Connecticut. And they'll let you know. They'll let you know every single time they open the bridge for a boat. They'll let you know everything. So if you wanna hear about it all day long, sign up for it. But you will be contacted and made aware of any event that takes place. That's, that's cer, those are the two alternatives you have. And we're gonna do the best job we can to get the word out. But it doesn't always happen easily or quickly. I know in this last case, I was on the phone calling any number of people and getting no responses, and eventually getting some kind of response. But by then, I'd been down, found the bridge was operational again. And we were okay. And that sums up pretty much all I have. Okay. Just for our citizens' concerns, do we have any comments or concerns from citizens? Yes.
I'm from the ground now. Repaving of Petticoat Lane is an ongoing, uh... I think I live in the neighborhood. I had brought to the attention of the Selectmen at the, I started this project. My concern about Petticoat Lane from Shanigan Road all the way to Route 82, going across Hungerford Road, they're not gonna have a mile and a half paved straightaway. My concern has been the speed that's gonna be going on there and what the town might do to help everyone in the neighborhood. So the project is almost finished, and I'm back again. Looking for an answer. There are speed bumps that are power-friendly. If you do your research, it's all online.
Stop signs. There's things we could be done. And I've talked to Beth about them, and she's reluctant to do certainly the speed bumps. She doesn't like them.
Well, she doesn't like to do a lot of things, yes.
I, I understand. But she is our Public Works Director.
Correct.
And I'll talk to her again about what we can do to slow traffic down. And I agree with you, I live on 82. And you wanna speed, uh... Speed trap, there it is.
And if you have problems on 82, you go to the state, 'cause that's a state road. Me, this is where I go.
I appreciate that, and I will talk to her again.
Even going the other way, off 82, they're still doing it.
That's essentially a straightaway.
They do it on 82 by my house.
And they're flying when they hit.
60, 70 miles an hour in the opposite direction.
Yeah. Okay.
It's 25.
We can post it.
I had someone almost run the, uh, hit my tractor the other day. Farm, out there with equipment.
As I say, I'll be in contact with her and see what we can do. Okay, any other? Hey, thank you. We've had a revitalization committee. There's been a interesting evolution there. Back on the 22nd, we had received on the 19th our RFQs. Developed, we had a single RFQ that came in. We'd hoped for more. The committee met on the 22nd. Spent quite a while talking about it and thinking about it. And in the end, being very uncomfortable with the idea that we only had a single RFQ, voted to reissue the RFQ. And that was permitted within the definition, within the guidelines that go along with the RFQ. If we felt that we didn't have an adequate response, we could reissue it. Quite a bit of discussion about whether or not we should do that. And I made it a point to contact the applicant who had submitted one, who was very upset, very disappointed. And a lot of what was driving it was the thought that there was one other would-be applicant who contacted us and said, gee, I can't make it to the sidewalk, which was required. Can you do something for it? Can you work with me? And we hadn't heard another thing from that individual. I'd made some efforts to get in touch with them unsuccessfully. And eventually, East Adam News to get in touch with them. And this is after the fact completely. Oh, they said, well, no, we're not interested at all. So we really were left with the one. But by the time we got to the weekend after that, I was concerned. I contacted Bob, uh...
Kazner.
Kazner. Thank you. God, I'm losing it. And he had also been a little bit troubled by that decision. We talked about it, and we said, let's, let's talk to Bill Garrish about this, our concerns. And we contacted him. And in the end, we decided we would have a special meeting and rethink this, review it again. And on the, um... The date on that, 29th, the following week later, on the Wednesday, the committee came together again. And we spent a considerable amount of time talking about it. And eventually made the decision that we probably ought to go ahead with the one we have, with the RFQ that was in place. And we rescinded the decision of the 22nd and are now reviewing that submission. The committee had elected not to look at what was submitted, feeling that it would be unfair. And so at that point, we brought that out. It's being reviewed at this moment. We're going to meet again on the 12th to determine where we go from here and how we're gonna move forward. So, uh, what you saw in the newspaper was accurate for the moment. Tomorrow, there will be an article, I believe. I talked to Dave about that. And he said he would have something in there letting people know that it had been rethought, that we're going back and rethinking the whole thing. And moving forward with what we have. So that's where we stand with the village revitalization. Transfer station, the new RAM is in full use. I've been told that there are some, uh... Minor problems that got with it, they're working on. We're waiting to see how they work that all out. Hopefully, that's gonna sort itself out and be okay. Citation hearings, we really haven't done anything with that. Jimmy's working on the control of animals. And so that's in process still. We've not moved forward on cemetery. So I'm gonna move on to new business. That first item we have with the new business, the School Resource Officer Discussion and Resolution. By the way, any comments or thoughts on, just gone through?
No.
So, okay. Okay. And you've got in front of you there somewhere? My paper. You've got that memorandum agreement. And I signed that with Jeff this morning. And that's the basis for us going forward at this point. Okay. And I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen, in accordance with the $75,000 budgeted in the 2019-2020 Board of Finance contingency for the purpose of the School Resource Officer request... Officer, uh, request that the Board of Finance transfer said $75,000 from the Board of Finance contingency to the police salary budget and, be it further resolved, that the Board of Selectmen, in accordance with the executed memorandum of agreement dated June 5th, 2019, to the Police Collective Bargaining Agreement dated July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020, propose to hire an additional police officer for a total of five full-time officers with the intent of assigning one of the five officers to the School Resource Officer position. Can I get a second on that?
Aye.
Okay. And discussion? Any discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Kind of conservation discussion and development discussion. We are required to have one. We're actually a little bit late on this one. And, uh... Just making you aware of it. What you have in front of you is the draft for the procedures for us to adopt it. And planning zoning meeting, May 14th approves the draft. May 15th, 16th, sent to DEEP for comments. The May 15th, 16th, 17th, sent to the Board of Selectmen and others. I think you have copies there, both of you, at this point. It's an interesting one, it's a little different from the ones I'm familiar with from the past. Posted on the municipal webpage, May 2nd through 25th. And, uh... Public hearing will be July 23rd. The public notices, July 11th and July 18th. And the Board of Selectmen will call for a town meeting on Aug, on August 7th. Will call for a town meeting on August 27th. And it will be noticed in the, uh... East Adam News in the paper, August 22nd. So that's moving forward, and it's something we have to get wrapped up and get in place. It affects our eligibility for certain things that the state is doing. And so we do have to get one in place. This was an interesting one. Formatted a little differently, as I said, from anything I've seen in the past. Comments on that or thoughts on it? So, okay. Okay, now we've got a little bit more lengthy one. High school driveway parking lot bonding resolution. And... Just, just so we understand, the School Resource Officer and the high school bonding, uh, both have to go to the Board of Finance. At that point, they'll be moved former, forward along with the Consumers Union $25,000 gift that we got. And in order to have a town meeting, which is required for all of them, and have it expeditiously, if we wait until our next meeting to approve that, and the Board of Finance meets in the interim, we're gonna wind up right on the first party July, which is a lousy place to be. A lot of people on vacation, a lot of things happening. We're likely to have, to have a special meeting, Board of Selectmen meeting, at 11th, the 12th, or the 13th. I give some thought to what works best for you. And we'll try to schedule that and make it brief. But we're gonna have to, and for what it's worth, the bonding that we're talking about, we won't necessarily bond for this, for the high school driveway in the end. But if we were to want to bond, we have to pass this resolution now in order to do it. So it, uh, it's gonna be here, and I'm gonna drive you crazy reading. I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen, the Board of the Town of East Adam, the Town hereby adopts and recommends the Board of Finance the following. That the Town appropriate the sum of $378,000 to the cost of pavement resurfacing, ceiling regrading and repair at the Nathan Hill Ray High School, including without limitation, the cost of pavements resurfacing, scaling, regrading, repair of the student and visitor parking lots. The front circle, the right-side driveway, the Sugar House parking lot, the removal and replacement of curbing, the application of topsoil and seeding to disturbed work areas. The project appropriation may be spent for design and construction costs, appropriation printing of bid documents, cost estimate reports, and studies, equipment, materials, preliminary studies and reports, site improvements, architect fees, engineering fees, legal fees, administrative costs, net interest on borrowings and other financing costs, and other expenses related to the project or its financing. The Board is authorized to determine the scope and particulars of the project. The Board may reduce or modify the scope of the project, and the entire appropriation authorized hereby may be spent on this product, project, as so reduced and modified. That to finance said appropriation for the project, general obligation bonds and notes to the Town may be issued pursuant to Chapter 109 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Revision in 1958 is amended. The Connecticut General Statutes. Or any other applicable provision of law thereby enabling, in an amount not to exceed 378,000 or so much thereof as may be necessary after the deduction of grants or other sources of funds received by the Town for the project. The Town issuing and renew temporary notes from time to time in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds from the sale of the bonds or notes for the project or the receipt of grants for the project. The amount of the notes outstanding at any time should not exceed 378,000. The notes shall be issued pursuant to Section 7378 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The Town shall comply with the provisions of Stat, Section 7378A of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to any notes that do not mature within the time permitted by Section 7378. At the first Selectmen or a majority of the Board and the Treasurer of the Town, the officials be authorized to issue and sell bonds and notes secured by the full faith and credit of the Town pursuant to the Connecticut General Statutes or any other applicable provision of law thereto-enabling to finance the appropriation for the project that the officials are hereby authorized to designate a bank or trust company to be the certifying agent, registrar, transfer agent, and paying agent for such bonds and notes that Updikes, Kelly &amp; Spelacy, PC, Hartford, Connecticut, is designated as the attorneys-in-law to rent... Spelacy, PC, Hartford, Connecticut, is designated as the attorneys-in-law to render an opinion approving legality of any issue of such bonds and notes. That the officials are hereby authorized to designate a municipal advisor to the Town in connection with the sale of the bonds and notes. That the officials be authorized to sign said bonds and notes by their manual or facimal signatures, and that the officials be authorized to determine the amounts, rates of interest, dates, maturities, dates of principal and interest payments on such bonds and notes, the form of such bonds and notes, the provisions for protecting and enforcing, the rights and remedies of the holders of such bonds and notes, and all other terms, conditions, particular matters regarding
Sorry.
...the issuance and securing of such bonds and notes, and to execute, sell, and deliver the same, and provide all supporting documentation as may be necessary or desirable to accomplish such purposes to comply with the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended, Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 15C2-12, and in accordance with the Connecticut General Statutes and any other applicable provision of law thereby, thereto-enabling. That the officials are authorized to sell bonds or notes at public or private sale, to deliver the bonds or notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. If the bonds or notes authorized by this resolution are issued on a tax-exempt basis, the officials are authorized to bind the Town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain and continue, the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds or notes, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years. Six, that the Town hereby declares its official intent under Federal Income Tax Regulation Section 1.150-2, that project costs may be paid from temporary advances of available funds, and that, except to the extent reimbursed from grant monies, the Town reasonably expects to reimburse any such advances on the proceeds of borrowings in the aggregate principal amount not in excess of the amount of borrowing authorized for above project. The officials are authorized to amend such declaration or official intent as they deem necessary or advisable, and to bind the Town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption of federal income taxation of interest on such, on the bonds or notes authorized by this resolution. If issued on a tax-exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investments earnings to the United States in future years. That the officials are authorized to make representation and enter into written agreements for the benefit of the holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information, including but not limited to entering into a continuing disclosure agreement pursuant to Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 15C2-12, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws, laws of rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds or notes. That the First Selectmen is hereby authorized on behalf of the Town to execute any contracts with engineers, contractors, architects, and other persons for the project, to apply for and accept state, federal, or other grants to finance appropriation for the project and to execute and file any application or enter in any grant agreement or other obligation prescribed by the State of Connecticut or the federal government as applicable. That the officials are authorized to take all other actions which are necessary and desirable to complete the project consistent with the foregoing, and to issue bonds or notes to finance the aforementioned appropriation. That this resolution shall become effective upon approval at a vote of a special town meeting. Further resolved that the Board of Finance, that should the Board of Finance approve the resolution for the appropriation of funds for the project and the issuance of bonds and notes to finance such appropriation as recommended above, the Board hereby calls a special town meeting of the Town to be held June 25th at the Town Hall, Town Street, East Haddam, Connecticut, at 8:00 PM, and submits the following resolution to the electors and citizens eligible to vote at the town meeting of the Town for their approval or disapproval at said town meeting. Notice of such meeting to be published as required by the Connecticut General Statutes. It says, a resolution authorizing an appropriation of 378,000 for pavement work at Nathan Hale High School and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of bonds and notes in an amount not to exceed 378,000.
Second.
Okay. Sorry, Sue, I fell asleep. My apologies.
That was a long one.
It had to be done. Any discussion? All in favor? I think I said it all.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go, that's where it's at. Boards and commissions change, and I have a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Paul Sienna, the Conservation Commission, effective June 16th, 2019. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. And we do have a letter addressed to Mr. Rob Smith, Chairman of the Conservation Commission, and say please, from Miss, say, Dear Mr. Smith, please accept this letter as notice that I'll be resigning my Conservation Commission position as of June 16th, 2019. My family and I have sold our house in Mudus and would be starting construction on a new house in Portland, Connecticut. I'd like to thank you and all the Conservation Commission members for some fun and productive work parties on the many properties in East Haddam. Sincerely, Paul E. Sienna. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next three funds, we have none. And public comments again.
Last time we met, I thought we discussed the effect of notification of the bridge is closed to vehicular traffic.
We addressed that earlier in this meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, I came late. So, we have a process in place then, no more?
There is a process in place. It's cumbersome and not great, but it works.
So, the police are contacted immediately, the bridge operator calls the police, informs when the bridge is closed?
No. A Valley Shore does the contacting, they contact the Selectmen's Office, and they contact the emergency manager and Craig. And depending on what they tell us, we may go out with an ever bridge at that point or we may not. And anyone who wishes to sign up can do so through the state of Connecticut. The caveat is that you're going to get noticed on every single opening of the bridge.
Me closing the bridge?
No, no, every time they open the bridge for a boat, they're going to let you know.
They're going to have to be closing the bridge.
And if there's an event, they will let you know as well. And, you know, we will handle it through emergency management through my office. The dilemma that develops at that point is you have no idea how long it's going to be closed for. And do we go out with an ever bridge and make people aware of it? Or do we hold off a little bit and see just how bad it is? Is it going to turn around right away? This most recent case, I, I was calling, couldn't get ahold of anybody, finally said, you know what? I wasn't well, my wife drove me, went down to let's see what it looks like. We got down there, it was just been opened, and I got back to Craig and he'd just been notified that it had been opened again as well. And he had been struggling to find out what was going on. That particular one, the evening before, we'd had a lightning strike and I was contacted and all of us immediately contacted and told that it was okay, it was working again. I think it was when they tried to open it for boats going through the next morning, they ran into problems and made us aware of that. Took a little longer to sort that one out.
Okay, well, this is the first step.
Yeah.
We now have a process that will improve upon.
We have a process and we are made aware. And the dilemma, Craig and myself are both going to be confronted with, is when do you pull the pin and let everybody know? And nine times out of 10, you do that and immediately the bridge is working again. It's very confusing.
But it's a sure convenience for residents to be born. So, I don't think anybody's going to complain. Rather than drive all the way down to the bridge and find out you can't go on, you gotta go somewhere else. Anyway, a thing or a ring with.
Okay. Barry?
Yeah, two things. Planet Conservation Development is late, but it's at default of the Town, just for the record, is because the state's budget was off last year and that threw everything off.
That's right. I forgot that that was why.
I just wanted to remind everyone that it has nothing to do with the Town. Gateway Commission, when I was at a meeting, our last meeting, they were asking for a representative to sit on the, the revitalization, why they were not represented on that, what they put together. It was the first I had heard of it.
I did not form that, so I can't really offer any thoughts on it. And I, you know, reconstituted, brought it back together again as it had been originally configured.
But they've thrown out, as the Town rep down there, they wanted to know why they, why no one was rep, and they feel that maybe someone should be included in it going forward, but, but that commission would decide what they want to do at that point.
I really don't have a answer to that.
I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, next week is the annual boat trip. Your name was on the list, but then it's off. Are you going?
What day and when?
Wednesday, the 12th, you should have been notified through your office. Everything's now.
Well, actually, revitalization is meeting Wednesday, the 12th.
And I would hope that either of the other Selectmen, that they would like to sit there.
It's quite a nice trip. I've done it a number of times.
We have a seat, but Emmett is not going. Okay.
I, I can't go.
I, I'll have to look at my.
What time is it? It wasn't?
Five o'clock over across the river on Wednesday.
We heard about this at some point.
Yeah, you were probably on train.
But I can't get there for five o'clock.
Take it one way or the other on the river and.
Just let me know or call in time. Okay. Because there is no, because you had been listed, and also, your name disappeared, so I figured I might as well ask.
Okay. But thank you for reminding me. And I wish I could make you, because that's a great trip. Anyone else? Okay.
I'm a little discouraged over the, the report you just gave on the paid staff. 14, 15 months ago, we had one full-timer and six part-timers, all career firemen working for the Town. Over the course of the last 16, 18 months, obviously, that makeup changed. Encourage those of us that were working not to work here anymore. And now, we find ourselves at this point, going back to one full-timer and six part-timers. During that time, who suffered? The residents, because you didn't have the six part-timers to fill any of those gaps. And curiously, I read the fire commissioners' minutes and I saw where John Sarnick was requesting a second full-timer because we had X number of hours to cover per week. So, as discouraged as I am, it's glad that we'll be back up to full staff, but I'm still going to keep my eye on any funny business with the manning out of our paid staff and our volunteer fire chief. Secondly, I understand there is a problem with drug testing our volunteer firefighters, possibly.
I asked them to bring that up and deal with it.
My thought on that is the fact that they receive a pension and a tax evasion from the Town for their service, a random drug test could easily be put in along with a requirement for the tax evasion. In essence, they're employees when they sign on. And the drug problem is not gone down in this Town, in all organizations. So, I feel strongly it needs to start out. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the problem with it?
I raised the issue with them and asked them to look into the possibility of drug testing anyone who drives, and they're looking into it.
Oh, okay. I thought he made it sound like there was a problem, like they weren't.
I'm not aware of anyone with a drug problem there.
No, like whether it was a, it shouldn't be a problem to put it in place, I guess is what I'm saying.
It's, I've asked them to look into it.
That leads me to another question. What does our insurance carrier think about this? Do they require that all drivers be legal and free and clear?
I don't believe there's any requirement like that from the insurance company. If there were, we'd be complying with it.
That's, that's my point.
Yeah.
I'm surprised, because industry, that's a requirement. Dry work is a requirement. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Selectmen's discussion, the 12th, at 7:00 PM, we're going to have the Neighborhood Assistance Public Hearing. We do that every year. I believe we have two applicants at this point. Food Speed Musicals is, and you're there every year for that. I think sometimes it's just you and me that show up. And then, the Town of East Haddam always makes an application based on the open space. That's fine. And that's all we have on hand at this moment. That will be 7:00 on the 12th. And I did want to ask you, Rob, the Sustainable Connecticut, is that coming along? How's it working?
We've been reviewing stuff. Jim has attended a, as I think I mentioned one other time, one of the seminars, and we'll be meeting again with everyone. We also have a, a young lady on which will be assisting, so, as an intern, so. So, things are moving along, not by leaps and bounds, but moving along.
You're aware, I'm sure, that at CCM, at their annual meeting at Foxwood, they tend to put out big plaques and have people up on stage and take pictures. It's kind of a opportunity and they made a big deal out of it the last one.
Yep.
And that occurs, I believe, late in October. So, you could be there.
Should have some big, some big, hopefully, we'll have some progress and we'll be moving through the checkoff list, so to speak.
If you're on stage, take your picture.
Don't want to break any cameras.
Okay, anything else?
Thought you brought on my dress.
Well, I'll let you go if he doesn't. Anything, Sue?
No.
Rob? Okay.
Oh, yeah, one quick question. Long or can other people keep applying for this Neighborhood Assistance Act?
We, we have a cutoff date, but technically, we should be able to deal with it right up till the day before.
Okay, I just, just curious.
We've done that in the past, made, and, you know, made accommodations for people.
Okay.
But the 12th isn't far away now.
No.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to make a motion at 7:51.
Second.
To adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Be aware that the motion and second is sufficient. We're adjourned at that moment.
Okay.
You don't have to vote on it.